Good evening, welcome to Okone County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today is Tuesday, October the 26th. If you're joining us virtually to comment during the public comment portions of the meeting, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. Also, we do have a quorum present. We also have Commissioner Horton and Commissioner Thomas joining us by Zoom. After a moment of silence, we're going to ask Justin to lead us in the pledge to the flag. Please stand.
Thank you.
Yeah, first item of business will be to approve the agenda.
Make a motion for the agenda submitted.
Second, motion second, all in my favor. Thank you, motion carries. Next item is any statement and remarks from citizens. This is for anything that's not on the agenda for tonight. Anyone virtually? With that, we're going to move to any statements and remarks from commissioners.
None for me.
Do want to remind everybody, the November 2nd is countywide election for T-Sploß. Also, you can do your early voting through the end of this week. I also would like to congratulate the Okone County Water Resources Department, and they've earned the 2021 Georgia Water Association, Georgia Association of Water Professionals Go Distribution System Excellence Award, as well as for the distribution system as well. So, we're very excited about that. Then take an opportunity to behave themselves, judge, and earn that award. Also, mark your calendars for November 16th will be our next town hall meeting. With that, we'll move into contracts and right away, the first item will be discussion amendment to the CARES Act contract with the Northeast Georgia Regional Commission for the senior center. And actually, there's two different contracts we need to talk about. So, Mary?
Yes, sir, thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. The CARES Act funding is an additional funding for nutrition services, which can be divided between our congregate meals, our emergency home-delivered meals, and home-delivered meals, regular home-delivered meals, and any combination provided by the senior center. The Northeast Georgia Regional Commission Area Agency on Aging is asking that we amend our original contract. It was for $38,612.16 of that original contract for emergency home-delivered congregate meals. An amount of $1,832.85 is remaining. And for the regular home-delivered meal contract, $25.04 is remaining, and they want to use this up. So, they're asking for your approval of amending this contract.
Thank you. Any questions for Commissioners?
No.
You are for consent agenda?
Yes.
Thank you, Mary.
All right, the second amendment is the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, FF-CRA. The funding provides additional, the funding contract provides additional funding for nutrition service programs authorized under the older American Act of 1965. These are all federal fund, funding contracts. There's no additional funds needed from us. The original contract was in the amount for congregate meals was $7,143.59 for home-delivered meals, $14,297.40. Home-delivered meals has utilized their amount fully, and the remaining amount on the congregate meal portion is $96.74. So, they're asking for approval to amend the contract for that little bit amount.
Very good. Any questions?
No.
All right, for consent agenda?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We have any public comment on either contract? Anyone virtually? Thank you. So, our next item is to discuss the farmland preservation committee recommendation for FY22.
Mr. Vernon, this one.
But, oh, I'm sorry. Trying to get in. Now, next is a request to amend, to amend the budget for the issuance of the FY21 financial statements. Wes?
Good evening. I come before you tonight to request approval to make necessary budget amendments, to amend and revise the FY21 budget. That was the budget we just closed out, June 30th. We are on the final leg of our, our external audit, and it will be submitting to the state in the coming weeks. And so, I just need to do some adjustments. Most of the adjustments that I will need is in the revenue area. Example is $930,000 in local option sales tax and sale of assets and insurance premium adjustments for revenue that was above what we expected. Real property for current year, mostly a lot of TAF stuff came in for personal vehicles, motorcycles, trailers, things of that nature. And then, real estate transfers. So, who knew, in the middle of the pandemic, all these things would become red hot items? But, they did, they exceeded revenue expectations, and I need to adjust that to have a balanced budget for the states, for state law, and in preparation for that state audit. And so, this is just an administrative function to do that. On the expenditure side, there's a whole litany of small items. Those range from $10,000 in support for the tourism, that just moving over to our new CBD depreciation of the civic center, things like that. Most of the other items, the other big project, roundabouts, Eagle Tavern, you approved over the course of the year. And so, that's already been approved by the board. So, just need to make these revisions. So, I would just request amended revised authority and consider that for consent next week. Are there any questions?
Any question on the transaction?
No.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chairman.
You are for consent. Any public comment? Anyone virtually? Now, we'll move to the farmland preservation.
President. Thank you very much. Sam Thomas Vernon, Chairman of the Farmland Preservation Committee. Glad to be here with you tonight. And first, I want to thank the Board of Commissioners for including Sploß on their Sploß ballot last year. And also, I want to thank the citizens of the county for voting for it for a third time in a row that we've had Sploß included for farmland preservation. So, really appreciate that. And I think it's a very popular program in the county as well. So far, we've approved 881 acres that have either been approved or preserved. But, we still got one making it through the process from last year. But, we've got 881 acres preserved as of this year. And if this 47-acre portion of this farm makes it through this year, we'll surpass 900 acres and knocking on 1,000 acres. So, I think two words probably sum up this year's applicant patience and perseverance. And those are two things that it really takes to, to get through this program, because a lot of times, you know, just like this farm did, they got beat out last year by just a few points from the farm that went forward, and that farm got approved at the state level. And then, that's important, because just because a farm gets approved at this level for, for local match funding, doesn't mean it gets approved at the USDA level, because it'll have to compete there against other farms in Georgia. But, this farm, you know, persevered, and they rose to the top, and they were, you know, the farm that was selected this year. The Ned's have a beautiful farm on Cullen Ferry Road, and it met all of USDA's criteria. It had greater than 50% prime soils, which is what a lot of people don't have. If you don't, you don't have at least half of the soils as prime soils, then it just doesn't qualify. And you also have to have greater than one-third of the property is open land, pasture, or cropland. So, they met that, and thankfully, you know, they stuck with it long enough to, to be here this year. So, Steve and Paul and Ned's are here with us tonight, and they are continuing the tradition, the heritage that the Hartagree family started there, and they raised Angus and Hereford beef cattle on the farm. They've also been cooperating with Athens Land Trust in the past. You know, every applicant that's come through Athens Land Trust, which Melvin Steen is here tonight with me. They are the entity who submits the application for the landowner once it passes this level and gets submitted to the state. In 2019, the Ned's Farm was selected as the Okone Soil and Water District Conservationist of the Year. They're also active with the Clark Okone Catalans Association, and Steve has served as past president, and he serves on the board now as well. So, our committee, you know, is pleased to recommend the Ned's Farm for funding through the Sploß program for farmland preservation for 2022 for the USDA funding. I'll be glad to take any questions.
Any questions? So, this will be our second farm under the FY20, or the 2021 Sploß. We approved one last year. These things take 18 to 24 months to work through. So, we have basically $600,000 over the six years of Sploß. So, farm last, that was approved last year, will be funded in FY23, and this one will be funded in FY24 at 100,000 each, depending on how the match, but up to 100,000 for the farm. All that's handled out of Sploß.
Right, I think some preliminary appraisals already coming in, and I think, you know, the 100,000 will definitely be appreciated and welcomed with that. So, so, yes, we appreciate, you know, the Commissioners considering this. Any other questions?
I don't think so. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Tom. Thank you.
Be all right for consent agenda to accept that recommendation?
Yes.
Very good. Any public comment? Anyone virtually? Okay. You state your name, and you have the floor. Okay. Very good. All right, with that, we'll move on to the discussion of a potential broadband agreement, and we'll let Justin help us with that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board. Following the termination of our previous contract for broadband in the county, we undertook a series of meetings, interviews with various broadband providers, both large-scale, local, seeing if it's for the best fit for the county. We also contemplated and had ready actually to submit a grant application on behalf of the county for, for the broadband services. It's the same essential part of what you're about to hear in a later agenda item. But, after further discussions, we're coming to you with a recommendation for an agreement with Charter and not with the grant. This is a direct contract with Charter. The general terms of it, if you look at the map on there, the red area represents what is designated as unserved areas of the county for broadband. That doesn't mean that those are the only areas that don't have adequate, but by, by the DCA map, those are unserved. Represent approximately 13, exactly 1377 address points within the county. The blue area is identified as what's called an ARDOF, which is a regional digital opportunity fund, which Charter already has the contract as well, or has received grant for that. So, the general terms of this agreement are for 1.37 million from Okone County. It'll be 101,377 addresses served within the area. Interested in signing up or having service can be identified. We'll set that up on our county, and Diane has already started looking at ways to create fields that will be transmitted to Charter. They've indicated that they've probably about three months for ground truthing and to sort of set out what's necessary. Couple other comments. Charter has, in the past two years, been active in the community, notably the Lane Creek subdivision, which was one of our primary areas of concern, which they have begun building out. What they're offering is up to gig speed, and throughout this, throughout this whole area, an allowance for up to 1,000 feet from the road. If you have a house that's a mile off the road, you'll have to cover the difference between the 1,000 feet and the end of the mile. But, this is a great option for the county in this district. There's a lot of funds that are now flooding the country and the state for broadband. This puts us at the top of the queue, and we'll have them keep going. We are finalizing the contract agreement right now. We'll have that for your approval next week. And we have, but those terms are essentially what will be in there. I have here Catherine Fleming and Ben Brazil from Charter, and like, love to have them just make a couple of comments about this, make sure I didn't promise more than they agreed to.
You did not. Thank you so much for having us, Commissioners. I'm Catherine Fleming. I'm the Director of Government Affairs for Charter Communications. And you covered it perfectly. The blue area represents roughly 754 locations that have been funded by the federal government for us to provide a fiber to the premises build. And by this investment with Okone County, we're able to build off that and have what we call a synergy build, so that this will all be happening at the same time throughout the county. But, the blue and the red areas, like Justin mentioned, once the contract is signed, the first thing we do is do a 90-day field walkout, which is where we have our technicians in the field checking to make sure that each of these address points that we believe to be unserved are unserved, and that we all think they should still be on the list. If something comes off the list, the county, and we find something that needs to come on the list, we have the ability to switch those in and out. So, this isn't, you know, if we find an address that's already got service, then, you know, you're out. We can just switch it in and out as, as we go forward there. And this whole build represents 250 miles of fiber that will be across the county. And the total number is 2,131 locations. So, we are really excited to be doing this with y'all. We think that this, this could really be a model. Y'all are really smart to get yourselves to the front of the line, because Justin's right. This is, this is a lot of broadband that's going to be built out with the federal funding coming through. And so, excited about this partnership. Thank you for having us, and happy to take any questions you've got.
If you don't mind, I got it. What was the red now? Once again, I was trying to go back.
Yeah, so the red, those are the areas where the county will be helping to fund the build in, in the county. So, so, that's where the 1,377 addresses are that we're talking about on this list, that the county will be investing in to help get this built out.
And so, the white is actually already chartered.
So, the white is a great question. The white is a combination of where Charter provides service today, and where someone else in the county is probably also providing service today. AT&amp;T comes to mind, right? But, it's where broadband connection already exists. So, when we say unserved, these are locations that lack access to a reliable 25.3 speed. The speeds that we'll be providing are much higher than 25.3. They're gig-capable, symmetrical speed-capable. So, but that's, that's kind of how that unserved definition was. That's how we got to those locations, right? Now, if the county has a different idea of what we should consider unserved and everything else that is in your purview, because this is a direct agreement.
The contract allows for field verification process to determine the answer addresses, because the whole purpose here is to give.
Right.
Yeah.
So, just to ask you, actually, you have any idea what the, after 1,000 feet, what it costs citizens per?
In past contracts, it's somewhere between $5 and $6 per foot. And 1,000 feet, of course, it's two tenths of a mile. So, it's a pretty long drive, but I would expect it to come to town. It's not as long as some.
Yeah.
So, if you're not in a red or a blue area? And?
And you don't have service.
Right, that's where you use the portal and can be added on.
Exactly. And as we do this spear field verification, this map is somewhat rudimentary, right? I'd asked them to kind of shade the areas. So, you know, one of these locations might be right outside of the red area and everything else. I mean, when it comes down to it, all, all of this mapping, right, really has to be verified in the field, so.
We, I would say we're 85% confident, and that's probably pretty good. We've stayed with 85% of the uncertain addresses. That's why the first phase of the project has to be applied accordingly to a nice field verification process. Walkout, like, because you all don't want to pay for addresses that are uncertain.
And I guess one more question. The fiber is going to be underground or online?
I think the estimate on this job is generally 60% on poles, 40% underground was our estimates. That's all the subject change based on design next.
Sure. Yeah.
Yeah, railroad crossings.
Yeah.
Let me make myself clear about the 1,377 numbers. What you're guessing is the number of unserved?
Yeah, so, when we started this process out, we looked at the whole county, right? And all the data available as to who has service and who doesn't have service, and that's what came up.
Right. Now, and those, that red area, so, there are people who have some solution already that's maybe not be chartered, is that correct?
Within the red area? Yes, so, the, we, we have a different map that Justin can share later that shows the exact 1,300 dots on a map.
Where I'm going is, if somebody is currently being served by another provider, and they want to switch to Charter, does that take away from the 1,377? Is there a finite number?
Yes, no. Great question. The field verification process is to ensure that we only build 1,377 unserved houses.
Yeah.
So, if there is a location that's already being served by AT&amp;T, that doesn't count, it's counted as total.
Okay.
Do you want us to?
So, we're not paying for somebody to switch.
No, not, not at all.
The whole neighborhood, that when we did our maps, or the state did their maps, that some other providers subsequently came in and built that neighborhood.
Right.
There may be 100 addresses that go off of that. You're not, you're not counting it's that. I expect that 1,377 is a conservative estimate. Typically, we find more addresses, maybe 10 or 20% more addresses. But, we find some less because of the point.
Yeah.
What is the corporate structure for Charter Communications? Are y'all owned by who?
Charter is the stock ticker symbol. So, Charter is the Fortune 100 company.
Yeah.
Spectrum is the brand name that you're.
Okay, I was going to say, my check is written.
I think the contract is doing business as Spectrum Southeast LLC, but we're one in the same.
So, are y'all out of a local office?
Yes, and we have a tech ops office in Athens. We have a retail store actually at the Okone Connector. And then, my office is in Duluth, so I'm, I'm local.
Okay.
Yes. I have a 404 number, and Justin knows where to find me.
Yeah, have, I know y'all have been in the business a long time. Have you done something similar for other communities like this?
We have actually. Ben Brazil, who's with me today, he has done a couple of these in South Carolina, a direct agreements with two different counties in South Carolina where we're going through it. Which one are we starting first, man?
Florence County, South Carolina. We've never done countywide projects. We just didn't deal with Florence County, South Carolina last month, but we've done multiple projects with communities, Lamar, South Carolina, Cherokee County, South Carolina. So, I'm from South Carolina. So, because there's so much federal money now, we are working directly with counties who have their own ARPA money, and we are well-pleased that have come and took advantage of this. We appreciate you guys considering this. We, our recommendation is that you go out now, before the state broadband process gets started, because there will be supply chain issues on our labor, on fiber, and then even the six-monthly time is going to be really, really big. Yes, we've done a few, but this is new in terms of the scope of these types of projects for, for all, all the internet.
All right. Just, this is a general question. This is maybe crazy question, but that one blue dot, and I understand the sound.
Yeah.
How's that blue there and the one from the very top corner not served? And with everything around it is served.
You could ask the federal government that. This was based off of the locations they identified, and then, we bid on them in what was called a reverse auction. So, the, so.
But, you'll verify that before?
We will definitely verify that.
Weird is surrounded by serve.
I mean, in some of these locations, we, the federal government has said there's a location, and it's, you know, a shack in a field, right? No one's living there. You know, so, that's why you have to have the field verification.
One additional comment. You'll see this when we present for approval next week. The recommendation is for it to come out of the ARP funds, ARPA funds, which we do have in the bank. We've received our 3.9 million dollar initial trench from the federal government. And so, that's money that's earmarked and available as one of the two major buckets that we're going to look to spend it on.
Commissioner Horton and Commissioner Thomas, have any question?
Just one more process number, Jim. The blue areas, Catherine said that they're going to be going concurrently, but the blue areas have got it slightly ahead, the pink areas, just because we've already got the ARDOF plans in place, designs in place. And like she said, it's a synergy project, so we're going to be going with this. So, just for your information, who is actually going to start?
That's where the bigger need is, actually. You have a question?
So, so, just to finish that, every citizen will have access to broadband?
Predominantly.
That's the goal.
Predominantly.
Yeah.
The, the idea of getting 100% coverage to a county is, is, is the goal. But, it is, it's very, very, very difficult to say 100%. I would say 98% commission. It's, there's, we're going to do a walkout, and there, there's going to be some exceptional construction standards over interstate, over a lake. There will be someone on the top of the mountain that's just not going to make sense. But, predominantly, this is what we see is building out the county. You'll still hear from maybe a couple citizens.
Ban.
And they may have exceptional construction issues.
Well, and the other thing too, is if, if we get down to that 2%, there's nothing to stop the county from continuing to fund to make sure we get to 100%. But, this is our best effort at getting to 100%.
And also, the portal will be there. That's, that's a big key for anybody who's, they'll have the opportunity to find out, and then, we can pursue it from there.
Yeah.
I guess the, the contract's still going back and forth and under legal review. I think it's about worked out, but this will be back on the agenda for next week for final vote. So, we won't put it on consent agenda. If you have more questions, we'll be glad to track them down. Thank you so much. All right, next item is to discuss the new addition of Okone County Water Resources, water and wastewater standards and specifications. Yes, it is. You're going to read all 800 pages, I hope.
We're going to go through this whole book. Back in April of this year, we presented to you an updated standard, technical standard book for, mainly for the development community. But, it encompasses all wastewater and water needs for development, for development. The goal, I mean, I guess it's been several years since we have updated this thing. There's been new material strength test, stuff like that. We put in there, we've put checklist for developers and consultants alike. We've added new construction details, stuff like that, stuff that's been needing to happen for a few years now. The reason for the time lapse from April to now was to put this stuff on the website and reach out to the development community, whether it be contractors or consultants, and get feedback from them and revise it if necessary and bring it back to the board. The intent was to have this thing go into effect on January 1st of 2022. So, hence why we're here today, to get it back before you. There was no feedback, actually, and no revisions. There's been no changes since the April meeting. I'm here to, any questions y'all have, I'll do my best.
Page 19, paragraph 19.
I took that one out.
Okay.
Could you just give me a couple of examples of the changes that were made? I mean, just to help get a flavor, so I don't have to read the entire document.
Sure, sure. I think I got actually a list of changes here somewhere. But, no, let's see, for example, we require 8-inch ductile iron for our water mains. We did, for water quality purposes, we made the simple revision that Water Resource Department Director has a little bit of discretion to make it smaller, to get turnover in the pipe. If you don't get enough turnover in the pipe, you'll be corneal bad water. So, stuff like that. Another, another example is, we, we. Another, another example is, uh, we, we better agree strap detail for restaurants, stuff like that. Added a few more details on drop manholes. I put a drop in a manhole, stuff like that. It, it goes, it's little simple thing. It's not really real big or nothing like that. It's just a little bunch of little nitpicky things that I hated and I want to change.
It, it modernizes our spec book so that we're, what we're getting in the field is more in line with sort of the more modern practices. Some of the diameter is by, uh, just so that water resources have, have a little more tools to ensure that we're getting.
Yeah. And newer technology, stuff like that. Biggest thing was adding checklist for inspection checklist for development community. So a contractor could go through and look at this appendix and see exactly what testing, what step by step, what procedures they need to go through to get approval from us. You got the capacity calculations in there. It's been updated from two oh eight to two sixty yachts per day for residential use. Even though we don't allow residential use. We've got. See yours. Skip.
That's all right. I think I got the, I got the gist.
There's too many things going on in this brain squirrel.
There's a slim, there's a slim chance I'll read it, but I do, I do have your phone number.
You do.
Commissioner, none of this is very exciting stuff, but no offense, Adam, but the key to it was putting it out for the development community. The end users to really digest and give us any comments. So I think what you have back is, is something that, or what resource department has kind of tested in front of that community.
Oh, fat water and sewer extension form.
Thank you.
I'm available for any questions.
All right. For consent agenda on this item.
Yes. Very good.
Any public comment? Anyone virtually? Thank you. Next time is discuss the wastewater grant application. Just.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is a grant application we're going to apply for this week, actually. So if you remember, the, the ARP, American Rescue Plan Funds, of which we have three point nine million now, another three point nine million next year, it can go toward COVID, COVID related issues, but also for water sewer and broadband. We are proposing up to one point seven million of the go toward broadband, which you just heard. But this is a project that we're going to apply for in an aspirational sense. But we, it's, it's a, we believe overall it's a fantastic project for the community and one that we're endeavoring to do now. This would help accelerate it. So we'll just go through the four key components. There's two what I call the core objectives and two that are additional objectives. So objective one is upgrading calls creek water resource treatment facility from one point five MGD to three MGD. This is under, currently under design right now. So by the time that the, the grant is awarded, this will be shovel ready to go, go forward. This is a key component from an economic development perspective to allow capacity, also from a environmental capacity. And then also, if you recall, that calls creek has already reached its maximum discharge. So this would also include the discharge line that goes to the middle of Coney River. This from going to three MGD will set the county up for decades as far as the treatment capacity available. Objective two, which is a much smaller, is this will allow us to decommission the LAS. It's an end of life system at the land application facility. This is what has to occur to then move towards turning this into a park. So this becomes a two hundred and sixty acre park. Unfortunately, for two hundred and fifty thousand, you don't get everything seen on there. That's just sort of a test fit on the concept. But that's objective two is, is, is the decommissioning of the land application system. So as part of this also, objective three, these are what I've called the additional objectives, would be the development of great water reuse system at calls creek itself. So currently we irrigate our parks with potable water at a, at a higher, higher treatment rate. The great water reuse system, as we're building out calls creek water treatment facility, will allow us to take that water treated, go back to our park system, improve the environmental concerns, decrease the use costs of it, and then just have the lush green fields that our community is looking for there. It also provides a substantial amount of drought resiliency, the first thing that during the drought times that they cut or irrigation for obvious reasons. So that this, uh, benefits the park from that perspective as well. Then the fourth objective is a bio solid composting. And so when you go through wire treatment facility, you create inert bio solids. And this would be the process would allow us to take it with composting and, and reuse it, limit the capacity, limit the use of landfills. Bio solids and composting is often used within the agricultural community, specifically for wildlife abatement. But there's other elements to it as well. So this is an additional fourth objective that we're going through. So from cost. So the core objective right now, and these are, um, these are a bit of a guesstimates, but fairly, fairly well thought out. The plan upgrade, we believe, will be about thirteen point nine million dollars. We're, we're proposing a, the state level and the local percentage at fifty fifty with this. The core objective for the land, the land application system, decommissioning, this is primarily clean out sludge, liners. That's a two, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We propose to fund that a hundred percent from a local. The additional objective of the reuse transmission, we're estimating at five point seven, five, five million, two, seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We're proposing this at a seventy-five, twenty-five state to local funding. And then the bio solids, which is a, a drier facilities, right now estimated at ten million dollars. This one's going to have to come a hundred percent from the, from the, the state level of funding. We just don't have on the local level. If we don't get this, we would probably pursue something with a third party to do as well. But this is sort of the aspirational ask to it. So overall cost for the entire grant, the total project cost is thirty-two million, eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, of which we are proposing nine point three, nine million, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars of local funding and requesting twenty-three million, five hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred dollars from the state distribution. So a more specific cost breakdown where we're proposing from one point eight million comes from capacity fees. That those are specifically earmarked to upgrade the capacity itself. So that's a logical upgrade. Those would go directly to core objective one, when we charge capacity fees. We would take three point nine million of the American Rescue Plan Funds, which we receive in our second trench next year. Going towards that, and those are again allowable usage. We have six hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars earmarked for economic development purposes under SLOSS twenty fifteen. Another one point eight million dollars of twenty fifteen of water and sewer. And then the up that hits the upcoming SLOSS twenty-one of one million, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Of SLOSS twenty-one, which have just begun collection. So it's nine point three million dollars overall local funding. It would be wildly aspirational to us to achieve that entire grant match. But what it does is it gives us the ability to slide up or down. And also because the ARP funds granted by the federal government, we would not be touching either the general fund dollars or the actual enterprise fund minus the capacity fees, which are earmarked for this purpose entirely. So these are, these are funds that were previously earmarked for capital improvements that would go directly to it for the grant. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. I'm sure you might have a few on this. But overall, this would be a generational project for the community that would get a lot of benefit.
Any questions?
Justin, as far as the funds that the county, we have those, we'll, we'll be in place. So we don't have to borrow any money.
That's correct. Okay. So this loss fifteen is one hundred, we have full collection. That's, that's in the bank right now. And the ARP funds will receive our second trench next year. And so that, and this, this could be spent over a four year span for, for these grant. So no, there's no additional funds required. We wouldn't be borrowing for this.
And so what, what, I think the deadline for this application, I mean, this grant application, when is the deadline?
October thirty-first. This year, of this year, this week.
Sunday.
So when will we hear something back on that? What's their timetable?
So that's an interesting question. We're not entirely sure. The, um, your original deadline was actually August thirty-first. They extended it two months. We, we would anticipate hopefully something by end of calendar year. But we don't know. We've, I've heard a large number of applications have already been submitted. I should sub substantial more this week. We intend to submit tomorrow and hopefully get ahead of the portal crashing. Typically with this, you'll see two to three lines, but often they haven't fully fleshed out with the processes. Often they bring representatives in for further interviews or clarifications. But we intend to submit this week. Thank you. So no action required from the board at this point. We'll submit, we'll see if, unless you're just submitting what, what we receive. And then the, the point of presenting this to you though, is as a board, we need to be prepared to provide these local funds as enumerated there.
Thank you. Anyone online? Saxton, I mean, Thomas or Horton? Very good. Thank you, Justin. This is a, a big project. So hopefully we can get some of that money. It opens up a lot of doors all across the, our, a lot of our strategic plan, if we can pull this off. But we do not have need of an executive session. That will, Commissioner Sax.
Motion to adjourn.
All right. We are adjourned then.